My God, there's a few less people here this time than there was last year, aren't there? I'd like to begin and open up this year's town meeting with Reverend Kent Morehouse Norhead from the United Methodist Church in Acton representing Acton's religious community to give the invocation. Reverend Morehead.
Let us pause for a moment. And now let us pray for our community. Let us pray. We pray for its people and their safety and their freedom and their full life. We pray for our many institutions, including our schools, our police, our fire, and for our leaders. As we gather here in this privileged community, we are thankful for our blessings. May we be prepared to accept the responsibilities that go with them. Let us remember this evening the less fortunate in our community and also in the wider community. And so let us also remember our wider metropolitan area, including the city of Boston with which we are so interdependent. We ask that we might also find ways beyond strengthening this community to be responsible members of this region. And now may this town meeting further the quality of life here, the environment, and the people of our town. Amen.
Before we begin, let me ask, how many of you are here for the first time at a town meeting? Are there some people who have not been here before? Okay, I notice half a dozen, eight or ten hands up. Then for you and for others, let me review a couple of things with you which may facilitate the procedures a little bit. Normally, I think we have sixty-three articles to dispose of at this town meeting. I will read the motion and be especially mindful of the motion because that is what you're voting on. You're not voting on the article. And the motion can be slightly different from the article although it is often very, very similar. So pay a special attention to the motion, particularly the numbers in it which may be different from an article. After the motion is read, we will secure a second for most articles to that, for all articles, to that motion, to that motion. And then we will let the mover of the motion speak to it. We normally then ask both the boards, or all appropriate boards, and in many cases it will be the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to give you their opinions on whether this article should pass or fail. And then it's opened up to the town meeting members for a general discussion. What I would ask you to do is to go to a microphone, and there are about six or seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, I guess, four in the front and two in the back. Go to one of those microphones, and I'll try to rotate from microphone to microphone pretty much. Go to any microphone unless I give you other instructions. And in one article tonight, or in some night of this town meeting, we will, we will probably have pro and con microphones because there's one article, I think it's Article thirty-four, that is probably a fairly controversial article, so we'll try to balance the debate off between pro and con people, and we'll separate by microphone. That just makes it easier for both sides to get a fair hearing. When you are at the microphone and speaking for the first time, if you would give your name and street address, it would be most helpful. That way we'll know who you are. The second or third time you speak in a town meeting, you don't need to do that. Just the first time for the first article. You don't need to do it all the time, except of course if you're going to run for office and then you might want to give your name several times. Let me see. When you're speaking, I've noticed over a fairly long period of time that the brevity is both effective and appreciated. It would also be helpful when you go to speak if you're going to make a point, make a different point or make it differently from someone else who has already made the point. Making a point two or three times often just prolongs the meeting and doesn't add much to the debate. Everybody is welcome to speak. If it's the first time you've ever spoken at a town meeting, you might say that a little bit and we can give you a lot of extra appreciation for your effort. Try to keep the debate, if you can, on a high plane. We will not brook any personal attacks, particularly on boards, certainly not on the moderator. But that is, that is helpful and it makes us seem like polite citizens. I will accept the motion for the previous question at really any time, but try in all fairness to have some debate, pro and con, before someone gets up and attempts to cut off debate. As you know, debate can be cut off with a motion to move the previous question, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. It's really the only two-thirds vote that isn't counted, pretty much. You can tell from the way people yell it out, one way or the other. When we vote in this town, we generally vote by voice vote. I'll try to discern whether the article is passed or failed from the way I see you responding or hear you responding. If I can't tell, I may take the vote a couple of times. If I can't tell on a voice vote, I'll ask you to stand. And if I can't tell from the way you're standing, if it's close, I'll have the tellers come forward and we will count the vote. This meeting, we have a lot of two-thirds votes. And as you probably know, two-thirds votes, unless they're unanimous, must by law be counted. If they're close to unanimous, you know, three hundred yes and two no's, often I will ask the vote to be taken again. And if it's still three hundred to two, I will generally ask the no's to stand and count the no's, and then we'll count enough yeses after that to get our two-thirds majority. In other words, all two-thirds votes don't need to be counted by tellers. However, if there's any significant number of no votes, I will not do that. I will have the tellers count it. And I have not counted up as to how many two-thirds votes we have, but there are probably fifteen or twenty, I would guess, in this town meeting. There are quite a few, in any event. Before we begin with the business of the town meeting, I would ask Dorie Hunter, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to introduce the people at the table at which she's sitting.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Selectmen is before you tonight. To my right is Bill Mullin, who is the clerk this year, Nancy Tavernier, Norm Lake, and last but certainly not least, on the end is Ann Fenton, who has been the vice chairman this year. As you know, Ann is leaving the board this year after one term which follows a number of years of hard work on her part of the master plan. And we don't ever let anyone, particularly someone who has worked as hard and been as effective as Ann, go without some small token at this point. So on behalf of the board and indeed on behalf of the community, I have a small floral token for Ann tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Let's see, did we, did we also introduce Mike Callahan, the town council?
You're certainly correct. I did not.
Okay.
To my left is Mike Callahan, town council, occasionally gets to answer a thorny question and sometimes gets to read. And behind him, who's back with the staff at the moment, is Don Johnson, to whom we Selectmen, as we're speaking, sometimes like to look in desperation for a number or two. And because Don doesn't always have him at his fingertips, he's got a couple bean counters behind him. John Murray, our most effective town manager, and Roy Wetherby, our long-serving finance director. Thank you.
And I would point out Catherine Belbin, our town clerk. And I'd ask Charles Olmstead to introduce the Finance Committee or do something different from that if you wish.
Good evening. I'm Charles Olmstead, chair of the Finance Committee. I live at eighteen Kinsley Road. I'll ask each member to introduce themselves.
I'm Sidney Johnston.
Paul Cohout.
Good evening. I'm John Rogers.
Corwin Morgan.
Mary Donald.
I'm Herman Kabakoff.
Sharon Cadet.
David Steinheifer.
Elliot Whitney.
That was done, that was done quite well, Charles. I thought coordination was very good. We will now move into the articles. And the first article of business is the Consent Calendar, something which we have been doing now for, I don't know, Nancy, five years, six years, which was really your invention, which I think is a speed at Uptown Meeting and done a very good job. I think we have twenty-six articles on the Consent Calendar this year. And the way we work this is that I will call off the articles and what they're for. And if you don't want this to be on the Consent Calendar, if you will yell out the word "hold", you don't need to go to a microphone. And two people yell out the word "hold", we will take that article off the Consent Calendar and we'll put it back in its normal rotation among all the articles. After I've gone through all twenty-six articles, and some may be held, we will have a balance of them which are not held, and without discussion, we will take a single vote on all twenty-six articles, and they will not come up again in this town meeting, in all likelihood. So we will now go into that. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing no one with questions, we'll begin right now with the Consent Calendar. That, you know, I've had, you know, lots of bad buzzers in my life, but that's, that wasn't meant at me, was it? Who did that? It was Gil Verdi getting back at me for criticizing him for last year's sound system. I know it. All right. On the Consent Calendar, Article Three, Council on Aging Van Enterprise Budget. Article Four, Nursing Enterprise Budget. Article Five, Septage Disposal Enterprise Budget. Article Six, Neswick Enterprise Budget. I hear one "hold". How many people are holding? Okay. Hold Article Six. Article Seven, Neswick Stabilization Fund. I have one, two. Article Eight, Merriam School Enterprise Budget. Article Thirty, Self-Funding Programs. Article Thirty-two, Emergency Disaster Aid Appropriation. Article Thirty-five, Cemetery Land Fund Transfer. Article Thirty-six, Chapter Ninety Highway Reimbursement. Article Thirty-seven, Acceptance of Gifts of Land. Article Thirty-eight, Acceptance of Gifts of Land. Article Thirty-nine, Street Acceptances. I hear one "hold". I hear the same person saying it twice. Nice try. Okay, he's saying side by side, okay. Article Thirty-nine, Street Acceptances, has been held. Article Forty, Charter Road Sidewalk Easements. Article Forty-one, Main Street Easement. Article Forty-six, Zoning by Lawmen. I hear one "hold". I hear two "hold". Article Forty-seven, Zoning by Law Amendment. Article Forty-eight, Zoning by Law Amendment. Article Forty-nine, Zoning by Law Amendment. Article Fifty, Zoning by Law Amendment. Did I hear two "holds"? I did. Article Fifty-one, Zoning by Law Amendment. Article Fifty-two, Zoning by Law Amendment. I'm getting good at this. Article Fifty-three, Zoning by Law Amendment. Article Fifty-eight, Accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter One Forty, Section One Forty-seven A. Article Fifty-nine, Zoning by Law Amendment. And Article Sixty-one, Remove Police Chief Position from Civil Service. Now, see, I told you, only needed two. There was more than two, doesn't get held. All right, these are the articles that have been held. Six, seven, thirty-nine, forty-six, fifty, and sixty-one. Leaving us the remainder to be voted on, and I'll take that vote now. All in favor of passing the articles on the Consent Calendar with the exception of those that have been held, please say "aye". Oppose, say "no". Motion carries unanimously. Good. Now we will go to Article One. Article One is an article that is a traditional one to start town meeting. It requires six votes, but it goes very quickly. There'll be six separate motions. Motion One, Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the warrant on page eighteen. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded to fix the compensation. Any discussion? Seeing nobody standing, will vote all in favor, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". The motion carries unanimously. Two, Malcolm S. McGregor, Sr., nominates Edward Bennett as trustee of the West Act and Fireman's Relief Fund term to expire in nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-seven. Are there any other nominations? This is one of those that don't need, doesn't need a second. Hearing no other nominations, I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Edward Bennett as trustee of the West Act and Fireman's Relief Fund, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". The motion carries unanimously. William Clower nominates Alan Nelson as trustee of Act and Fireman's Relief Fund term to expire in nineteen ninety-seven. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Alan Nelson as trustee of Act and Fireman's Relief Fund, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". The motion carries unanimously. Shirley Toll nominates Mabel Grekula as trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund term to expire in nineteen ninety-seven. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed. All in favor of Mabel Grekula as trustee of the Charlotte Goodno Fund, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". Motion carries unanimously. Cornelia Huber nominates Edwin Miller as trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund term to expire in nineteen ninety-seven. Do I hear any other nominations? I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Edwin Miller as trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". Motion carries unanimously. Frances Bissell nominates Madeline Katabowski as trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Act and term to expire in nineteen ninety-seven. Are there any other nominations? I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Madeline Katabowski as trustee of the Citizens Library Association of West Act, and say "aye". Oppose, say "no". Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will move on to Article Two, dealing with hearing and accepting reports. The motion under Article Two, Mr. Hunter moves that the town accept the reports of the various town officers and boards as set forth in the nineteen ninety-three town report and that the moderator call for any other reports. Do I hear a second? I recognize Mr. Hunter. If you wish to say anything. Any other comment? Yes, gentleman at the back.
Ninety-eight Central Street. I just wish to express my disappointment that the town clerk continues to omit the vital records pertaining to marriages and births, as we had had in past years, their public record. I feel they should be part of the town report.
Any other comment? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of accepting the reports, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other reports to be given at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to, let's see. Three was on the Consent Calendar, four was on the Consent Calendar, five was on the Consent Calendar, and we'll move now on to Article Six, which was on the Consent Calendar and has been taken off it. Mrs. Tavernier, are you going to use slides, Nancy?
I think it might be most efficient to just ask what the questions are unless you want a presentation.
All right, then let me, let me read the motion. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town appropriate one million, five hundred and seven thousand, one hundred dollars for the purpose of solid waste disposal and to raise such amount, one million, five hundred and seven thousand, one hundred dollars, to be transferred from the Neswick Enterprise Fund. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mrs. Tavernier?
Yes. I don't want to call.
You just want to ask, answer questions, all right? Mr. Cadillac?
I'm assuming from the two people who held that they know the general information about Neswick. I'd be happy to give it to everybody else, but if we wanted to start with specific questions, that would...
Mr. Cadillac?
Charles Cadillac, Paul Riviera Road. The purpose of me holding the question, this article, is to simply understand where the money comes from, and this is a bit out of context because we haven't really looked at the overall budget yet. But the one and a half million dollars does not appear under the municipal budget. I'm just not clear where it comes from.
Okay. I do have an overhead then. The Neswick budget is an enterprise fund which is set up by law to be similar to a revolving fund. You bring in revenue and you're allowed to expend it up to that level. The Neswick Fund, Enterprise Fund, is broken down this way. The funding for the entire operation is the one point five million dollars. Of that, nine hundred and sixteen thousand comes from taxes, three hundred and forty-six thousand comes from stickers, which are mainly residential stickers. There are a few commercial business stickers in there, otherwise they are totally residential stickers. Commercial haulers bring in a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue, and we have a fund balance at the moment of fifty-five thousand dollars from which we will be funding the replacement of a ten-wheel tractor this year. That exists because there are more revenues and expenditures. We've had a sinking fund for equipment and repairs, and that is built up to the level to allow us to replace the tractor. The, when we looked at the total allotment to the town, it included the total budget figure, town budget figure, plus the nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the total tax revenues used by the town.
Other questions? Mr. Cadillac?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Where does the nine hundred and sixteen thousand show up in the budget?
It's not in the budget because it's in the Enterprise Fund, which is a separate article from the budget, as are all the enterprise funds. They're not in the budget. They're a separate enterprise activity outside the general operating budget.
Can you just tell me which article it will be under?
It is under six. This one.
No, I mean the, the enterprise funds. When will we allocate the enterprise fund money? It's under this article, is what you're saying?
Yes, right here.
I just got this tonight, so bear with me. But it's under the two point two million dollars enterprise funds that's in the Finance Committee handout? Is that how it's coming down now?
Yes, and if you...
I see heads shaking, so I think I... Thank you.
The other question under Article Six. Seeing nobody standing, will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Six, say "aye". Oppose, say "no". The motion has carried unanimously. Article Seven has been held, dealing with the Neswick Stabilization Fund. Mr. Mullin moves that the town appropriate four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the purpose of replenishing the Neswick Stabilization Fund and to raise such amount, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars be transferred from the Neswick Enterprise Fund balance. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mr. Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As it says, this is a stabilization fund that is, that is maintained by the, the town of Acton. There are peaks and valleys in the, the way that we pay Neswick, and a stabilization fund is, is designed so that we can smooth out those peaks and valleys. Over time, we have had a, shall we call it, a disagreement with the Neswick operators about the method of payment, and as such, we have accumulated an enterprise fund balance. The particular number of four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, I must emphasize immediately that this is a fiscal year nineteen ninety-four event, not a fiscal year nineteen ninety-five event. And secondly, it has no impact, zero impact, on taxation. The four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars has been derived from, we have finally received a bill from Neswick in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand dollars. We have paid the thirty-five thousand dollars with which we agree, and we are suggested to them that they go back and try again at the, at the math to come up with the remainder. That's where the four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars comes from. We knew the bill was coming, and as such, we have accumulated the money, and it is only now that the bill has been received that we seek the transfer of the balance. To repeat, it does not affect taxation in fiscal year nineteen ninety-five, and indeed, it's simply a transfer from the available fund balances.
Mr. Gromick.
I'm not opposing this, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I'm a little bit confused by the presentation. The stabilization fund is unique and separate from the enterprise fund, if I understand this correctly. Yet, when the previous article came up, we were presented with a fifty-five thousand dollar balance in the enterprise fund. We are transferring, as I understand this, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from the enterprise fund to the stabilization fund. Where is it?
Mr. Mullin.
The, I'll give my answer, then Dorie can give his answer. The, the amount of the, the four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars does not come out of this year's budget. It is an amount that has been accrued as the, as the bills have come in. You're right that there is a difference between stabilization and the enterprise fund. The stabilization funds are amounts due from the municipalities to the Neswick operation to stabilize the balances. We have had a dispute with them, and we have effectively waiting to, we've accrued the money in our own enterprise fund balance, and now that they have presented... money in our own Enterprise Fund Balance, and now that they have presented the bill, we are, are transferring the money to the, to pay that bill.
If I may. In other words, this four hundred and seventy-six really is in the leftover balance of the Enterprise Fund. It merely didn't show on that previous slide because it doesn't affect the following budget. Thank you.
Mr. Fingerman.
One more question on this. I'm, I'm still a little bit confused. In our Finance Committee handout sheet, there's, there's no mention, we, we don't list any Enterprise Balance Funds. That means right now, as of this moment, we're sitting on almost a half a million dollars in this Enterprise Fund. Is that true?
It's substantially greater than that. It's approximately, there's, I think there, the fund balance is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that right? It's nine hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Nine hundred thousand.
If, if the fund balance is nine hundred thousand dollars, why do we only show fifty-five thousand dollars being applied to next year?
Because the amount, the, the amount of the escrow account is to pay for the stabilization.
So if we have nine hundred thousand dollar balance and we pay four hundred and seventy-six thousand, we'll have a net of over four hundred thousand dollars available?
That's correct, and approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that amount has been allocated for capital and equipment replacement, and from, and that's where the fifty-five thousand dollars is coming from. So effectively, if you take the nine hundred thousand dollars and you subtract out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital and equipment replacement reserve, you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to deal with this stabilization issue. Of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is remaining and effectively available for stabilization, we have now received a bill for five hundred and nine thousand dollars. As anybody knows who deals with Nezwick, variances are extreme, and so this is a prudent way to handle this particular circumstance. Once again, we have not paid the bill until we are comfortable with it. We are in dispute with Nezwick about it, and as such, we think it reflects very prudent management to maintain this balance.
I have one more question. I'm, since I'm very confused here.
Is that, I'm sorry, one more point that was just whispered to me is that bill is only through October fifteenth of fiscal year ninety-four, and so there'll be more of this, the same method of payment, of billing coming down the line.
You, you said that we're going to use some of the money from the stabilization account to pay for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of capital in fiscal ninety-four. Is that right?
No. The, the hundred, there's two parts, two components to the, to the Enterprise Fund Balance. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital reserve. From that, a fifty-five thousand dollars is being transferred. There is, the remainder is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for payments to Nezwick for stabilization funds. Of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars is transferred by this article. That leaves a balance of approximately two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seventy-four thousand dollars.
So I guess the last question would be, why don't we use that two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to reduce the assessment to the town for this current fiscal year? And I'd ask the, the Finance Committee to please comment on that, and as a parting word, I would just say that this is an awfully confusing article, and should no way ever be put on a consent calendar with, with this many issues and questions regarding it. I would appreciate hearing from the Finance Committee on, on why they recommended this article. Thank you.
Well, we came from the point of view of the requested, requested appropriation of a million and five, and the estimated income of five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The, the point of the sta, of the stabilization fund is, is, has no impact on the taxes, it's just smoothing out the payments. So as Nancy said, that's nine sixteen coming out of the surplus. I'm not quite sure what, what other question, answer I can give to your question. Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I am, just like Mr. Gronnik, not opposed to the way this is being done, but I really do wish we had some information on this sort of thing. There's a million dollars floating out there someplace, which up till this point, nobody that picked up every piece of information available for this town meeting had any idea it was out there. There's nothing in the warrant, there is no handout. You know, I don't, I'm not going to ask questions about all the other stabilization funds, but it, Enterprise Funds, but it makes me wonder, you know, what is the total amount of money involved out there? And I second Mr. Fingerman's comments that this kind of amount should not be in an article in the consent calendar. It should be explained, should be presented. We will probably take forty seconds to vote it once we understand it, but to find out simply by having it explained that there is a million dollar amount, nine hundred thousand dollar amount in the Enterprise Fund, which we really didn't know anything about, does make me wonder about what other numbers we don't know about. I would hope in the future town meetings, we could have a simple slide that shows these account balances so we can keep track of it. Thank you.
Other comment? Yes.
Putter Drive. One more question for Mr. Mullin. You indicated that the bill we've gotten to date for approximately half a million dollars is through October, and we're transferring or looking to transfer an amount to pay that bill. Can you tell me how we transfer amounts later in the year when we're not having a town meeting to pay the bills that come due for the period of time from October through March?
The bill that is in question is an older bill, and as such, is, is, is being taken to pay that back bill. The current budget will incorporate the payment of the current obligations.
Okay. So this is just an old bill that's in, in dispute?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comment? No one is standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Seven, say aye. Oppose say nay. Article Eight, dealing with the Merriam School Enterprise Budget. Do we, yeah, that's right, that was on the consent article, thank you. Article Nine. I just wanted to see if you were awake. Good, thank you, this, you were. I wasn't, though. Budget transfer, Article Nine. Mr. Lake moves to raise and appropriate one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars to be used in conjunction with the funds appropriated to the municipal services budget for the current fiscal year, and that to raise such amount, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded, Mr. Lake.
I have one photograph, I'll give you a chance to get out of the way. Just a reminder, this is not next year's budget. This is the current fiscal year. I apologize for the data on the top. It's really free cash, certified free cash to the town as of June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-three. The town had a free cash balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. As we understand it today, our outstanding commitment under Ed Reform is going to require that we pay another thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars to the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District for the current year, which leaves us with a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars available from free cash. In the current fiscal year, we have a snow and ice deficit. Instead of snow and ice removal, it should probably say sand depositing too, for those of you who've walked in your driveways recently. The deficit for the current year is a hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred dollars. This motion is to take the hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six available from free cash and allocate it to snow removal. It will not pay the entire bill, but it will go a long way.
Other comments? Finance Committee? Finance Committee voted to recommend, perhaps you didn't hear that. Other comment? Saying no one's standing? Yes, sir. Now, you come to a microphone if you'd like to speak.
I can say from your office, for like, two years, you've decided to move on.
Good work. Any other comment? All right, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Oppose say nay. Article Ten, Minuteman Regional School Education Reform Levy. Mr. Wiltse moves to take no action under this article. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded, Mr. Hunter.
This article and the two articles that follow it were put on the warrant because of the Education Reform Act and its requirement that we appropriate in this fiscal year additional sums to come up to the formula. Ron Fitzgerald and Bob Wiltse, respectively the superintendent and our representative of the Minuteman Regional School District, have worked long and hard for the community in pushing definitions and moving funds and using income against their non-education reform budget so that they did not have to come back to the town during this year for additional money, and we owe them a great debt of thanks in that regard, and therefore we agree and support that you take no action under this article.
Finance Committee, we concur. Finance Committee concurs, saying no one's standing, we'll vote. All in favor of taking no action under this article, say aye. Oppose say no. The motion has carried unanimously. Article Eleven, dealing with the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Education Reform Levy. Mrs. Harding Barrett moves that thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars be appropriated to pay the Acton-Boxborough School District assessment in fiscal year nineteen ninety-four in order to meet the town's obligation under the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mrs. Harding Barrett, you wish to speak to this? Or duck your responsibility as a citizen to do this? I, I don't know.
If there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Well, is there a question? No question? Well, I know what to do when there's no, oop, there is a question in the back. Yes, sir. Working, yes.
This was mandated by the state?
You're actually speaking without giving us a full introduction, and I know you should have one.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Dick Swenson, New Town Road.
Thank you, Dick.
Acton Center. This was mandated by the state?
Yes.
I don't recall voting for it. And this, and if I were a representative, I probably would not have voted for it because I don't think that's the way to raise money for schools. If we're going to pay for the schools, we ought to pay them out of the town budget, not by some mandate from the state. I suggest we send the bill to the state and let them pay it.
I, I, I hope that wasn't in the form of an amendment, was it? Any other question? Saying none, yes, gentlemen at the back.
What are the consequences of not paying?
Mr. Hunter.
The Education Reform Act, like the old fiscal autonomy provision, has a ten taxpayer suit requirement. Basically, you have to do it.
All right, any other question? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Board of Selectmen, come on.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Not in the middle of a vote, Dory. There's only so much I can stretch the form here. Oppose say no. Motion carries. If you'd like to make a comment on it now, you're welcome to. Article Twelve, Acton Public School Education Reform Levy. Mrs. Stutz moves to take no action. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mrs. Stutz, do you wish to speak to it? You don't believe it's necessary? Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to it? Mr. Hunter.
This is the third of the three articles of retroactive levy on the Ed Reform Act. Only, as you saw, the article for the regional schools needed to be moved, and that in a relatively small amount of money. The original appreciation under these articles that we were going to have to increase the school spending for this year was originally, as of last summer, approximately a million dollars. Through negotiation, definition, and a lot of arm twisting, the amount was reduced to very relatively small money. The regional school waiver was not granted, but the regional schools have more than offset that for this year by B and D against the assessment. The local school waiver that the selectman applied for was granted. As a result of that, we are avoiding having to transfer forty-eight thousand dollars out of what you saw was the free cash account to the schools this year. However, we, we, the Board of Selectmen, have agreed to leave the forty-eight thousand dollars in their budget for ninety-five that would be based on this ninety-four vote, so that basically, they will get that advantage of that money for each year here and after, but at least we ducked the bullet for this year. Thank you. We recommend the article. Take no action.
We concur. Finance Committee concurs to take no action. Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of taking no action under Article Twelve, say aye. Oppose say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article Thirteen, dealing with the town operating budget. Mr. Hunter moves that the town budget for the period July first, nineteen ninety-four to June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-five, in the amount of eleven million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, be raised and appropriated in its entirety, except that sixty-five thousand be transferred from cemetery trust funds for cemetery use, and that four thousand dollars be transferred from the county dog fund for library use, and that... Hey, I'm not making this stuff up, you know? That wasn't in the motion. And that fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars be transferred from wetland filing fees for the conservation department, and further, that the town manager be authorized to sell, trade, or dispose of vehicles being replaced. Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With the moderator's indulgence, which I think was previously arranged for, I'll speak generally about the whole town financial plan, which is Articles thirteen through seventeen, and then specifically about Article Thirteen, the town base B budget. I am privileged to be here as the outgoing Chairman of the Board tonight to make the third town budget presentation. I'm proud to continue the tradition of selectmen taking direct responsibility before the voters in the meeting, and have twice before had the opportunity to present the Acton Public School Budget. I've done these presentations under, for the schools, before and after Proposition Two and a Half, under fiscal autonomy, and then after it was extinguished, and now under Ed Reform and Proposition Two and a Half. Under Ed Reform, the schools' B budgets, that is, the non-override budgets, are mandated and out of the town's hand, meeting's hands. The town takes the leftovers, and from a municipal perspective, every dollar extra that goes into a school budget and thus becomes part of the base for next year is forever lost to the town's B budget. In this meeting later, only the schools' A budget increment, and only in the Acton Public School, their override request, will be at issue. Every dollar in the town budget is at issue and open for debate. Under Ed Reform, to get to the number that the town may use in planning its appropriations, is a process of subtraction. The town... The town takes what is left over now. To determine the town available revenue usage, we must first look at Minuteman School Formula Requirement, the Act in Boxborough Ed Reform Formula Requirement, the Act in Public Schools Ed Reform Formula Requirement, and then we choose, there was some confusion about that before, we choose then to subtract the money appropriated to the deficit in the Nezwick Enterprise Fund and arrive at a number that is left over. Out of that number that is left over, we must also set aside the overlay reduction, that is, the reduction in funding as against the maximum tax levy must set aside in order that we can cover any tax abatements that are granted. Under Ed Reform, any errors that the town makes in estimating the revenues, if on the high side, if we get more income than we expected, it'll flow to free cash, if we make any errors such that the revenue actually comes in under what we had anticipated, it will have to come out of the town's operations. This year, when we did all of this calculation, we came out with a town available maximum appropriation amount of $11,157,000. The town operation this year will not have any transfer from free cash. As you saw when Norm Lake had the slide up, we had expended what existing free cash there is to try and cover the deficits in this year. The selectmen approached the town financial planning this year as we have for a number of years with the goal to continue to provide existing town services. We frankly have been struggling to do so. The town, it's certainly no news, has taken cuts and deferred maintenance requirements and replacements in order to get in under the financial ceilings that we've had to work with in previous years. Just to mention a few examples, in this year, when I say last year, of course, you know, I mean, I'm talking about the year we're currently standing in, fiscal '94, the Memorial Library took a funding cut of 11 percent. We've accumulated 14 miles of roadway that we have not paved out of 100 that we should have by now if we were paving five miles a year as we should be. Excluding the police vehicles, which we deal with as a separate case, by my calculations, we should be replacing about 10 percent of our rolling stock every year. The last five years, we've averaged replacing between 1 and 4 percent. There were lost override elections last year, but we did not take those votes as a different signal, that is, that we should not attempt to maintain the present services to the degree that we fiscally can do so in a responsible manner. Give you a little idea graphically of what's involved, we printed a chart in the warrant, which I'm going to show you, comment on, and then present two variants on that chart with different information. If the moderator -- ah, he's already anticipated and been moved. We're using this low-tech device, I don't know what this computer thing is. Undoubtedly not town equipment. This is the chart that's in the warrant. It's difficult to present these, what we feel are funding gaps, graphically, without a lot of explanations and assumptions. We used fiscal '89 as the starting point on this graph, this is in your, the same one that's in your warrant on page 11, if I've gotten my numbers right. You will remember, those of you who follow Town Meeting closely, in 1989, we had a budget which was composed, or a financial plan which was composed similarly. This year, that is, a base operating budget plus a lot of warrant articles. Then in some of the intervening years, we rolled all of the things that traditionally had been in warrant articles into the budget and presented you a single bottom-line article, and now this year, the articles are coming back in. So if you go budget to budget, these numbers don't track, but if you include all the warrant articles, that they do. And we simply show you that we have not yet, in real dollars, for the '95 budget, and there's some caveats to this, but before I get to the caveats, this graph shows you that we're still below our fiscal '89 spending level, even though we're up about 1.43 percent this year. Now, another way to look at this, and one reason that this is true, and it's a little difficult to show graphically, because as I'm going to touch on in more detail, we have a bonding program that we're offering you this year in a group of articles, and those bonds will be issued in July of '94, which is the beginning of fiscal '95, and the first payment on those bonds will not become due until July of '95, which is the first month of fiscal '96. So the expenditure for those, that bonding, is not within this fiscal year, and so that presents a caveat on the chart that I have shown you. And instead of looking at about a 1.43 percent increase, if you assume that the debt service is back in this fiscal year for comparative purposes, just move it back a month, then we come up about to the line, just a little bit above it, and we have an overall financial plan increase, assuming you vote all these articles, of about 3.5 percent. Or, as somebody suggested to us that we should do for comparative purposes, and we certainly wouldn't normally do this, if you took the full principal amount of the bonding package that we're offering tonight, which is about $1.3 million, and put all of that expenditure into this year just for comparative purposes, you wouldn't do that, we've never done that with bonding articles, part of bonding is to spread out the pain. But if you did that, it would look something like this, and we would be up about 12 and a half percent on the financial plan this year. That's a rather artificial number, but I think it gives you some idea of the scope. Basically, the middle approach, I think, is probably best for comparative purposes, remembering that you're backing up a month from the prior fiscal year, and it puts us at about this, very roughly, the same percentage increase that the regional schools will be this year under Ed Reform mandate, which is purely coincidental. All right, this year's financial plan consists, first, of a base B budget. That's the wages of staff, plus expenses and cost of living increases. We want to protect the existing staff. I had put together, and it's been done somewhat on the run because we had a lot of other more important things, but there was a handout which shows you the missions of the various departments, and we got the employees' names and dates in there, and it was being worked on as late as this noon, so if there are any proofreading mistakes or whatever, I'll certainly take responsibility for it. This is our most important asset, the people that work for us. In attempting to fund, continue to fund that staff this year, we looked at the monies available, and we found that we were helped, as I'll discuss in detail when I get into Article 13, by the fact that we have a substantial reduction this year in the debt payments that the town must make on town and certain school indebtednesses. We found, we looked at the numbers that we could cover the existing staff and the inevitable growth in their wages incrementally, and have roughly $118,000 left over. But in looking at the staff, as I'll discuss a little bit further in Article 13 in some more detail, we felt the necessity to make some restorations of prior cuts that have been unduly hurtful. I'll come back to that. But when we had accommodated those cut restorations, and we had about $35,000 left after people, and the necessary expenses of uniforms and supplies and paper and even police crews, we had about $35,000 left over to apply to a huge accumulated deficit or backlog, if you will, of replacements and maintenance. It was obviously insufficient amount of money, it didn't even cover a fire ladder truck, which we consider to be absolutely essential. You'll hear more about this under that article, but just as a slight introduction there, basically, the old ladder truck, which is an essential piece of fire equipment in town, failed. We've leased a replacement, hoping to buy out the lease with this article. Well, how did we get the money for that? Well, remember, I mentioned in brief under those retroactive levy articles, which only ended up transferring some 30-odd thousand dollars? We had a phone call and paper last August that said, "Hey, town, you've got to pay over to the schools roughly a million dollars this year to get them up to the Ed Reform number." That was an extremely frightening thing for the selectmen, and we immediately cut out overtime and stopped all purchases that we could stop, and as a result, you had substantially less fire protection and police protection, no overtime replacements at all, through the fall and into the, just at the very beginning of the early winter. Fortunately, we ended up ducking the bullet, what we had through our bottom-line flexibility and the budget accumulated as substantial savings, which we are now using in main part to apply to the lease of that fire truck. The $35,000 that we sort of had left over, if you will, after people, we have chosen to apply in the budget that we were recommending before you toward Article 14, which is a four-wheel-drive fire vehicle increment to be used with money appropriated last year, which we didn't get a chance to spend, which will be discussed further, and an impact fee formula under Article 15. You'll also see in the sheet that shows the financial plan in the warrant that's listed as, listed Article 35, which went under Consent Calendar for Cemetery Funds, which, of course, is self-funding out of the trust fund. We broke out those two particular articles to begin, as we did with all the debt articles to heed what we heard were expressions of desire last year in Town Meeting to get back to the multiple article situation. I would just footnote that, saying that we're doing that because you want us to do it, it makes we, the selectmen, very nervous because we only have a certain amount of money, which we feel is insufficient to operate the town the way we think you want us to operate it, and we put up a priority list and we fit it in under that amount, then if any one of those particular warrant articles fails on Town Meeting floor because you don't think it's a good idea to spend that money, we essentially have a gap out of that total that we could have spent, and that doesn't mean that there are other things that aren't backed up. How some ever. In going forward this year, we wanted to avoid an override request if at all possible because that's, first off, our general operating policy. Secondly, we knew because of their pressure of rising enrollments that the Act in Public School is going for an override above their Education Reform Act mandatory formula entitlement, which will, by the way, decrease the formula leftovers for us next year, and we felt that that simply exhausted the town's potential general override capacity for this year. Nevertheless, we wanted to move toward closing the deferral gap because we don't think things are going to get better in the future, and we have a substantial backlog, as I've indicated. Given the low current debt load, which I've already alluded to helping on the wage situation, it seemed to us that borrowing was the answer this year, and those borrowing requests are set forth in Articles 17 through 27. Using last year's terminology, through Article 15 is the town's B budget, non-override budget, and Articles 17 through 20 are our A budget, only this year it does not involve an override. You must vote, of course, any bonding article by two-thirds, but there is no override. We are not asking that any of this debt be excluded from Proposition Two and a Half. Why, you might ask? The answer is very simply, the debt load seems to be so low that we don't think it would be fair and good conscience to ask people to raise their taxes to bond these articles. The chart shown on page 12 in your warrant, for anyone that hasn't found it, it looks like this, sets forth the, oh, wrong one. Looks like that on page seven. Ah, I'm not doing very well at this tonight. Okay, I finally got it. Looks like that, shows debt service of about $288,000 and about $1.3 million in the total issue. This is not a plan, the base B budget plus this much debt application, not a plan that can be followed repetitively. There is a limit certainly on the prudent debt that the town should incur, and at some level of incursion of debt, consideration should be given, as we have in the past, to excluding debt from Proposition Two and a Half and making it essentially self-funding. The schools have made a generalized claim against potential bonding capacity for future years, very wisely, not unreasonable at all, even though ultimately, under Ed Reform, all non-Proposition Two and a Half debt's going to come out of the town's allotment. But we certainly want to be reasonable, and the selectmen might similarly someday wish to make the first claim against the town's potential general override capacity. Either of those capacities is somewhat nebulous. Debt capacity can be expressed several ways. One way is to look to what the law says. The normal, there is an emergency, but we certainly don't want to talk about that. Normal statutory cap on borrowing is 5 percent of the equalized valuation, that's the value of property in town. We now have outstanding $1.35 million in debt, we have an equalized valuation of about $73.6 million. How would you like to pay the tax bill on all of that? That's less than 2 percent of the limit. It can be expressed as a percentage of revenue. Right now, we're at 2.2 percent of revenue, and I have a slide, but I've also done an average and have it in my notes. I picked out Sudbury, Hudson, Maynard, Concord, Lincoln, Westford, Chelmsford, and Harvard, and averaged all of their figures for the current year for debt as a percent of revenue and got 8.75 percent. Ours is at 2. If you vote the entirety of the bond package that we have put before you in fiscal '95, the next fiscal year, and assuming no other increase, and there wouldn't be in that year, you get a debt to revenue of 2.1 percent. In '96, you get 2.53 percent, there's a spike in '96, as you'll see in a graph I'll show you in a moment. And in fiscal '97, again, assuming no additional debt, it drops to 1.73, and it plays on out to 2001, down to just a tad over a half a percent. We intend, as I've indicated, to time that first bonding payment so that it will fall in the following year. Here's a chart I was just given tonight, showing the bonding percentages as a percent of revenue in the list of towns that we have routinely or always compared ourselves against. I didn't want to be accused of having picked towns selectively. And as you can see, it goes from Carlisle on the top, which is all the way up at 18 percent, down to Act in a 2 percent toward the bottom, and Framingham and Sudbury both come in under as at 1 percent. Expressed on a pie chart, and debt service, should have practiced these. As a pie chart, you can see that we're talking about 6 percent of the financial plan. Now, this is this is a bar chart, and the debt that is shown on this chart in red is excluded. That's excluded from Proposition Two and a Half, which meant that when that debt goes away, the funding for that debt goes away, which, of course, is significant to this analysis. The green is the non-excluded. You will see that we are here in fiscal '95, having come down from a substantially higher level, the excluded and non-excluded together, if you vote this program, debt service will spike up in '96 and then drop off fairly radically. Debt capacity is how you define it. If debt capacity was what you were paying last year, then it's at that level. If it's at some other level, then you more or less pick a number within the parameters that I have given you. I haven't been able to find anybody that has a formula that comes up and says, "This is the formula for exactly the percent of debt you should have." That ends up being your judgment. Now, looking at the blip in '96, and considering Town Meeting presentations, we said, "Okay, we have experienced phenomenon each year, as we get down to Town Meeting, and after we have printed everything and distributed everything and gone through the FinCom hearing and everything else, there are always some numbers that change." It's very frustrating. This year, we decided we would try to keep the numbers the same, and indeed, you will see when I get to Article 13, the number that has been moved is exactly the number that's printed in the graph in the warrant. But we decided that if we had any additional revenue, and when we get to it, you will see that there has been, we had any additional revenue, we would apply it under Article 16, which is another one of those stabilization funds, a commitment that the money will be used for specific purpose. We would put a warrant on the, an article on the warrant, Article 16, to apply to any funds to reduction of this '96 spike, so that we could get it down, and when that article is moved, you will hear indeed that we have found $77,000, mostly because Minuteman is in under what we expected, and that will take the increment, otherwise would increase debt service in fiscal '96, by $165,000 down to and sixty-five thousand dollars down to eighty-nine thousand dollars. Those numbers again are based on you voting the entire package. That's the overview on the bonding and the financial program generally. Let's now turn specifically to Article thirteen, the base B budget. There's a chart, as you've already seen in warrant, under Article, under Article thirteen So well organized, I can't find my slide, but you have it in front of you. As I've already noted, the motion is the same amount as the table total. The table is broken up to show you both wages and expenses this year, to give you a little more information. It is in bottom-line format to give us management flexibility. There is within this, in the expenses for the police department, money for replacement of four police cruisers. They are treated differently than all the other vehicles, which are set out in other articles, because the replacement of the police patrol vehicles occurs so rapidly and is so, relatively, and is so essential to their patrol program that we really consider that to be a tool. You'll also remember those who've been coming for town meeting for a while, we a number of years ago agreed on a rotation of two, two, and four in replacement of police vehicles. This just happens to be the four years, so there are four police vehicles in here. Anything else that you might consider a capital article is not. The operating budget then is up one point four three, but look at line number nine, which is the debt service. Let me find this line. Now, still can't find it. The debt service line number nine is down about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That has given us considerable slack to work with this year, whereas the total funding available to municipalities compared to last year was only up about two percent. Allowed some staff changes. I mentioned before restoration of prior cuts. Memorial Library, which was cut eleven percent last year, we feel imperative upon the fervent application of the library trustees. In line number twenty-four, under Memorial Library salaries, we've included thirty thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars to restore one FTE, one full-time equivalent cut last year. That cut was not of a single salary, but was achieved by taking all the staff hours down five hours per week and eliminating a part-time person who was, position was vacant and was not, it was not refilled. This was done last year because we simply had to squeeze down to get under a funding ceiling. It also, same line item, also includes twenty-seven thousand dollars to restore the Friday library hours, which if my memory serves me right, was a cut that originated back in Fiscal ninety-one. We'd like to get the library back up and open the period of time that it should be. It is a major service center in the town, both for the school community and for the town in general. In the engineering, in line thirteen on the salary side, we have included three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for summer survey help. We used to have five people plus summer help in that department. We're down to three and a half. It takes a couple people to do survey, and in the summer, without summer help, we essentially have to shut the shop down. Planning, we've squeezed down. That's line twenty-eight in salaries, and we proposed to put something back. Where we once had four people in planning, we now have two. We'd like to take that back up to two and a half. That's twenty-four thousand dollars. The development pace is increasing in town, as anybody's driven around and looked at the buildings going up. And the planning staff, which we cut back severely when the building turned down came by, it's sort of the town equivalent of how many kids you have in a classroom, is how many planners do you have to deal with how many building applications? I'm not going to comment on all of the changes. We've heavily footnoted the table this year to try and give you some idea what the changes were. I would highlight the fact that the large percentage change in line two for the assessor is because this is a revaluation year, and we need both appraisal assistance and also expert help in defending cases before the Atella Tax Board. Everyone's always interested in the town's legal line. In the town, the legal money is all in one place, and that's line twenty-two, and there's a ten percent increase there, and we're projecting that again because of developmental upswing. It's interesting, as the building boom, well, I don't boom, but building upswing in town brings in to play lots that were not as easily developable as the ones that have already been built upon. The number of issues, environmental and otherwise, per unit of development seems to be much higher. Number thirty-two, the senior center line, as you all know, I presume we have, courtesy of the Smith family, a new senior center. That's a new initiative, it better serve the seniors, and we need to operate that building. So those are new expenses. Line thirty-three, snow removal, which everybody's been focused on, we're budgeting again for a normal year, not for the year just passed. And finally, line thirty-seven, the West Acton Library. You may remember last year that the selectmen, in an attempt to reduce expenses, proposed to defund the West Acton Library. You decided otherwise and funded it in free cash. We just about came out even, as it turned out, and then had a better accounting later on. But we brought that back into the, into the regular budget and reallocated some of the overhead expenses for that into other lines that seem to make more sense. I don't pretend to have memorized every number in all of this budget, although I have read them all. I'll be happy to try and answer any of your questions, and any I can't answer, I'll have a number of people on the stage that I can pass the ball to. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommends? Finance Committee recommends the budget is presented.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I'm sorry, let it back.
Janet Murphy, Concord Road. I would just like to express for myself and for the Accord Group our gratitude to the Board of Selectmen and to the Town Manager and his staff for the great amount of work that they put into this budget, for the detail that we were presented with in a very timely fashion, and for the choices that you've offered to the town, because we really, as you stated earlier, felt last year that there weren't enough choices, and that we'd rather have choices even within an override. But to have the choices and not an override is an even greater gift. So we thank you very much for that, and we encourage everyone to vote in favor of this budget.
Gentlemen at the back.
Dennis Ahern, two ninety-eight Central. Dory, I'm just wondering, now that we voted Article fifty-eight relative to the county dog license fees, which normally go to the library, this four thousand dollars that was moved in the budget article, does that wrap up the balance of whatever fund we have with the county? Which fiscal year is that from?
You know, Dennis, Mr. Moderator, you know, I tried to think of every possible question I could be asked, and that wasn't one of them. The intent of the later articles is to get us out of the Middle Sex Dog Fund, which takes a percentage of the money, and to essentially get all the fee income ourself. The four thousand that's in there is this year's, is the money we've gotten this year from it, and as you know, we use that as an offsetting revenue, and that dog money and everything always confuses the motion. I'd rather get, even if we weren't making any money, I'd like to get those other articles approved, just to get that dog fund out of the motion.
Will, will there be any left in the motion next year, or do you think this will, maybe some residual will have to close out next year?
The honest answer is I haven't before.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious.
Mr. Kralik.
Mr. Moderator, a hopefully quick question to reconcile some numbers. If I heard your motion, as you read it correctly, we are raising and appropriating the amount that's the same as the total of page seven, which is eleven, one, two, five, four, eight, five, but then you said accept and listed three items which add up to about eighty-three thousand dollars. Does that mean we are not raising that amount? And in which case, how does that reconcile with the eleven, one, five, seven that's on the one Finance Committee handout? Could somebody just put these numbers together for me?
Yeah, let me take a try. When we figure out the available revenues and come to the derivation that gave us the eleven, one, five, seven, we count all of these revenues. But when we move it, we have to move with this caveat, that's what I'm saying. We have this every year, and we've tried to word the motion different ways so as to be less confusing, but basically, those are part of the town's revenues, just like motor vehicle excise and what have you and what have you, except that legally, we have to include them in the appropriation to take the money.
May I, well, the eleven, one, five, seven, again on the Finance Committee thing, looks like the expense side of the budget, not the revenue side. That's what's confusing me. I understand what you're saying, Dory, but this handout, the first five items on the lower right-hand side of this, look like the amounts that we are going to be spending. Eleven, one, five, seven for the town, nine, nine, seven, two for the local schools, and so on. So are we spending that, or are we raising that?
Let me see if, if this helps at all. These, the form tends to confuse me, but. Hey, the guys in back, give me a little help. Which line is the dog money in? Done under fees? Yeah. I think you'll find that it, that it's simply for simplicity lumped into there. It's an income to the town.
Well, I don't mean to carry on a dialogue, Mr. Moderator, but four thousand is not why I'm standing here, yet sixty-five thousand coming in from the cemetery fund. You know, I mean, what you're showing, it says total operating expenses, town eleven, one, five, seven. The motion says eleven, one, two, five, less eighty-three thousand. I guess to put the question another way, how much is the town budget that we're going to raise and appropriate net?
I believe it's eleven, one, five, zero by the time you add Article fourteen and fifteen.
Oh, that's in it too.
Remember I said that after, this is the, Article thirteen is the base B budget, and it doesn't quite expend, if voted, all of the monies that the town backs into after its commitments under Ed reform and to, and the funding, the Nezwick, and as my memory serves me, all of that adds up to eleven, one, five, zero, and the additional seven thousand is part of what will go into that stabilization article, which is seventy-seven thousand, including seventy that we didn't have to appropriate to Minuteman that we thought we were going to.
Okay, I think I've got it. Eleven, one, five, seven is the sum total of Articles thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Uh, less seven thousand dollars, yes.
Okay. I don't know whether the Finance Committee plans to do this later, but if there is going to be some kind of an overall presentation of how all the numbers fit together, I would find that extremely helpful, because we're looking at this thing piecemeal, and each money article we're going to be voting on, we don't really see the whole picture. So if there is going to be a presentation, the sooner would be better than later.
If I may just reiterate, the eleven, one, five, seven you see up at the top here, although it's the first number listed, is backed into basically by taking out the Ed reform monies, and indeed, you can see on this the differential on the enterprise fund appropriation, most of which deficit goes to Nezwick between the, the two numbers right there.
Mr. Gromick.
Dory, if you would, would you leave that up, please? If I understand this correctly, we are appropriating for purposes of taxation eleven, one, two, five, four, eight, five. Plus, we are transferring sixty-five thousand, four thousand, and fourteen thousand, three hundred from other sources into our available funds for spending, and coming up with a total town-side budget to spend of eleven, one, five, seven?
Correct.
Except that, eleven, one, two, five, four, eight, five, and these numbers, I don't think add up to that. Or, or am I right? They don't. I mean, I'm not arguing.
I'm getting negative nods from the Town Manager, let him have a try at it.
Mr. Moderator? I might as well jump in up to my knees. Neil, and Charlie, the monies that are appropriated there have been anticipated in eleven, one, fifty, seven. We can't get to them without appropriation from where they currently exist. They're not like our general fund from which we can appropriate. They do not add to the eleven, one, twenty-five that you see there. And if that's where you're headed with the question. If you look at Articles thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, the total, eleven, one, fifty, as Dory has indicated.
Less the seven, I understand.
Less the seven. So I'm not sure if that's.
Okay, so we're gonna, from thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, we're going to spend eleven, one, five, zero, plus seven and seventy are moving over into that stabilization fund.
Correct.
All right. Plus, these three amounts that are coming from different sources.
No.
We're not spending these amounts?
Those amounts are included in the eleven, one, two, five, and change.
No, I understand. Thank you.
You can see why I'd like to get rid of those.
Okay. Seeing nobody standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, under Article thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
If I may offer a quick suggestion, until that last second, nobody had said that those three numbers were included in that amount, and that was, I think, the whole source of the confusion.
Actually, Neil, the only one here was confused was you. Everybody else either was confused or not confused or didn't care. Mr. Lake moves to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be expended by the Town Manager to purchase and equip a command vehicle for the fire department. Do I hear a second? And moved and seconded. Mr. Lake, team motion.
Thank you. I'll attempt to be brief. Last year, the fire department came to us, requested a replacement for their command vehicle. What they really wanted was a four-wheel-drive type vehicle capable of going off-road, both in use for bad weather, snowy driveways, accidents, fires in the woods. We don't currently have a four-wheel-drive capability, except for one very big, very old brush truck. Last year's financial situation, we told the fire chief, no way, go out and buy a car and live with it. And right after we told him that, the state told us we were liable to owe another million dollars on our last year's budget to the school, so we called the chief back and told him, never mind, don't buy the car either. So we voted fifteen thousand dollars last year, then we told the chief not to spend it. As the numbers settled down with the state, we got to the point where it looked like we could replace the vehicle. They said, can we wait and see if the town has fifteen thousand dollars in next year that we can combine with it so that we can have a four-wheel-drive command vehicle? And the fifteen thousand you see in the article tonight is to go with the fifteen thousand we voted last year. The intent is to buy a Chevy Suburban type of vehicle as a fire command vehicle. For those of you who remember the last winter, if you were in a house at the end of a long driveway with fifteen, twenty inches of snow in it, and the fire department said, we understand you're having a heart attack, we'll get there as soon as we can, you'd appreciate the need for a four-wheel-drive vehicle. There was an incident last year in a neighboring town where a gentleman was injured in the woods, and he was there extremely long time. He finally came out in the back of an open pickup truck on his way to UMass Medical Center in Worcester. So this is a priority the fire department has had for years. It looks like we finally have the money that we can afford it. So the intent of this article is to ask for another fifteen thousand dollars to replace the same fire command vehicle that we didn't replace last year, except to replace it with a four-wheel- a four-wheel-drive type vehicle.
Finance Committee voted to recommend?
Okay, comments? Seeing no one standing, we will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Before we go to Article fifteen, let me take up another subject briefly. Each year, we have a number of volunteers in the town who retire, or their term of service of the town ends. And the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and the Board of Selectment, the town manager, and the people who are active, involved in running the town, would like to thank the people who volunteer so many hours to help keep our tax rate down, and for the service they provide to the town. Now, what I would like to do is now recognize the people who have retired from town appointments, and ask them to stand, and at the end of the announcement, there are about twenty names or so, I would like the town to give them a round of applause. Not until all have been named, however. Many are probably here tonight. James Barbado from the Board of Health, Louis Boragard, the Commission on Disability, you'd stand. I guess they retired, oh, no, here we are, okay. Ed Calome, Board of Health, Dorothy Chilton, Council on Aging, Camille Chavez-Gabrieli from the Finance Committee, Rosalie DeCortro from the Arts Council, Harold Gordonier from the Prison Advisory Committee, Ira Grossman from the Board of Health, Art Harrigan from the Finance Committee, Carrie Hobson from the Commission on Disability, Connie Ingram from the Commission on Disability, Paul Colhaus from the Finance Committee. This is a mistake, I reappointed Paul. Don't stand up, Paul. Your service isn't over to the town. David Langer from the Fort Devens Task Force, Matt Milezova from the Board of Appeals, Jack Powers from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, Charles Putnam from the Cemetery Commission, Ruth Rice from the Council on Aging, Sharon Santio from the Arts Council, Louis Stern from the Fair Housing Commission, David Throp from the Fair Housing Commission, Janet Throp from the Arts Council, and Charlotte Timmledge from the Conservation Commission. Thank you very much. We'll move now to Article fifteen, dealing with the construct impact fee formula. Mrs. Patton moves to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager, for the purpose of developing and drafting an impact fee formula. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mrs. Patton, your motion.
Mr. Moderator, you don't have to move. I don't have any pictures. I just can't speak without notes like Norm can, so I come down here. Article fifteen requests ten thousand dollars to fund experienced professional planning assistance to help develop a development impact formula and a bylaw to bring to a future town meeting for your approval. Impact fees would provide significant revenue to the town for capital improvements and services necessitated by new development. First question, how do we try to cover the new costs of development today? Permit-granting boards go through a review and public hearing process for new development. For example, the Board of Selectment approved commercial site plans, such as the construction of a gas station or a new store, and so short. The Planning Board approves subdivisions, either the subdivision of land into commercially developable lots, which would then later come to the Selectmen one at a time as a site plan, or residential subdivisions, which is the division of land into house lots. And just as an aside, for your information, often when you see all the individual homes going up, built right on the street with driveways right onto the street, this is not part of a subdivision, and by law, it does not need to go through the Planning Board's review process. During these review and approval processes for site plans and subdivisions, however, boards have and continue to negotiate for payments to offset the impacts of the development of the community. This has brought us some real benefits. One good example is the traffic light at twenty-seven and two-way, which was partly funded by developers' contributions. Another good example is the sidewalk that was built a few years ago along Main Street between Nagog Hill Road and Post Office Square, which was built with developers' contributions. While we've benefited greatly from these negotiations and contributions, it's an inexact science, to say the least. The contributions are always based on something rational during the review process, but it varies from project to project, and we always need to be concerned that when we set them as conditions of our approval, they could be challenged. Secondly, you might ask, why are we proposing an impact fee formula, and how would it benefit us and, in fact, the developer? Both in the master plan and continually through the planning that is done by all departments, both in the town and the schools, we are identifying extensive capital needs, often called our infrastructure, our roads and sidewalks, municipal and school buildings, sewers, and so forth. Impact fees, if such a bylaw were passed, would be assessed to new development to fund identified infrastructure projects necessitated by the new development, or, for example, expanded fire and police services that are needed. Impact fees and projects funded with those fees must be based on a reasonable and rational relationship between the development and the need to fund a new facility or service. When this recommendation came up during the master plan discussions with the business community three or four years ago, there were opinions expressed that such an equitable and predictable assessment system would be preferred to the guesstimating that has to go on today. Nationally, studies have shown that developers actually prefer such a process, because it is predictable. Thirdly, why do we need to pay for professional assistance? We have a good planning department. Primarily because, as stated in your warrant summary, the approach and language of the impact fee bylaw must stand on sound legal footing to withstand any challenges. Also, we need experienced professionals to identify and collect the appropriate data, for example, figures from the schools or the fire and police departments, and to develop the formula. Any fees charged must be directly linked to a future identified infrastructure need. And we need to study existing formulas used by other towns in state and elsewhere, and consider whether our formula would be town-wide or within certain improvement districts. However, the work will not be done entirely by professional assistance, as you can see from the amount that we're asking you to approve. Finally, are they legal, and do they exist in Massachusetts? There is no state law for or against impact fees, and there is no state law regulating how communities may apply and use them. There has been enabling legislation filed for years and years at the State House, but it just hasn't generated a lot of interest. All forms of draft legislation, however, require that a community must first have a master plan, which we do, and a capital improvement plan, which we have, but would probably need to put into final form. Impact fees are used widely in other states, approximately fifty percent of the states, and there are four communities in Massachusetts that have very, very different types of impact fee systems in place. They are Fremingham, Peabody, Walfam, and Medford. Their approaches are all different, and I'm not going into detail, though, if you have questions, they can explain. Medford's, though, in particular, was adopted under a home rule petition by a special act of the legislature, which could make it stronger than a local bylaw alone, and we would want to consider that. There is little case law on impact fees in Massachusetts, because these communities have not experienced much in the way of legal challenges. Their experiences would be part of our study. A recommended bylaw would take about two to three years to develop, assuming that a considerable amount of the work would have to be completed by our own staff, and it would be brought to you for review and approval when it is complete. I will conclude, and I can answer questions, or if they are very technical, I will refer you to either the Planning Board or the town planner, who are prepared to help in answering them.
Comment from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended motion.
Comments from the voters? I see no one standing, so we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article sixteen, dealing with the Municipal Stabilization Fund. Mrs. Tavernier moves to raise and appropriate seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars for the stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B. Do I hear a second? Then moved and seconded, Mrs. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dorey Hunter and his presentation on the budget have referred to the stabilization a couple of times, particularly the seven thousand dollars. Let me explain to you exactly what we have in mind. In past years, there used to be a formal stabilization fund in municipal government. It was subsequently phased out by the legislature and DOR, and all the funds went into free cash. However, we can set up a stabilization fund, which is sort of a rainy day account, which we haven't been able to do for the last several years, because we haven't had the excess funds. Now, granted, in the first appropriation into this is seven thousand dollars, which is not going to get us very far on a rainy day, however, it is part of our attempt to address the blip in the bonding program in fiscal year ninety-six. So the seven thousand dollars is the total municipal allotment, which was eleven million one hundred and fifty thousand. We were allotted eleven million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so that seven thousand we're asking to be appropriated into the stabilization fund. Let me just point out again, because the motion, there is no dollar amount in the warrant, it was in the motion, and again, that number was seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. So the balance of that seventy thousand five hundred and fifteen is, again, another account of excess revenues over anticipated spending, and that comes directly from the Minuteman Science and Technology High School. That was originally planned to be seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and because of some adjustments made by the superintendent of Minuteman, in hopes that the Department of Education will go along with it, that total now drops from seven forty-one to six hundred and seventy thousand, roughly, giving us a seventy thousand five hundred and fifteen excess revenue to spending. So we are asking to appropriate both of these amounts into the stabilization fund. The stabilization fund can be used, can be appropriated out of at a future date, it takes a two-thirds vote from town meeting. So it's not like this is a squirreling way of money that you will not have any say about how it's spent in the future, and our plan is, the next April's town meeting, to appropriate this money out of the stabilization fund and back into the bonding fund to help pay for the fiscal year ninety-six bond payment.
Comments from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Comments from the voters?
Yes, sir. Ben Hogan, John Cliffro. I had a question about this fund, where it's going to be later on in this warrant articles, be looking to approve an override for the public schools. Isn't this seventy thousand, which represents some twenty percent of the override that's going to be recommended, couldn't that be put towards that, thus reducing the override, and therefore reducing the permanent increase in the tax levy basis of the town?
Mrs. Tavernier?
This part, the seventy thousand in particular, I think you understand, the seven thousand came directly out of the municipal allotment, was what we had set aside, backed out again from what was, we need to send to Minuteman, the AB Regional, and the local schools, and this was part of that money that was left for the municipality to spend. We choose, in the plan that we have offered to you on the bonding of the capital articles and the deferral, to pay for deferral of infrastructure, we choose to put this aside in a rainy day fund, since it was part of our allotment to begin with.
My understanding, I was at town meeting last year, that one of the things town meeting expressed was wanting to have the ability to stop continual increases in the permanent tax base of the town, and one of the things that the bonding does is, in fact, do that, that as the expense that we had is paid off, it's no longer part of the permanent tax base of the town. And it seems to me that if you're getting money from money you're expecting to have spent on the schools, and yet, further on in the warrant articles, you're asking for an amount of money which is, I mean, this amount of money, seventy thousand dollars, is significant in comparison to that. It seems to be a little, I don't know, it's almost as if you're wanting to spend the money in a way that's sort of different from how it was supposed to or intended to be.
Well, in our opinion, the needs of the municipal budget are very severe, too. If this were money that had been set aside for the local schools or the AB Regional schools, I think we would have a very different argument. The problem with the Minuteman assessment is it is still very soft, whether the Department of Education agrees with the numbers that we're appropriating tonight. And it doesn't seem to make sense to remove that money that was originally calculated using our existing agreements to be sent to Minuteman. If we remove that money and then find out we have to pay it, it is a direct cut to the municipal budget.
When do you find out about that?
We hope we find out June thirtieth, but we didn't find out until two weeks ago for last year's, this current fiscal year's numbers for the local budget. The Department of Education, the Department of Revenue, aren't exactly communicating, and in between are all the cities and towns who are waiting for final numbers.
Couldn't the override vote be made contingent upon that, and you use the money to reduce the override amount?
That's your option, I guess, if you want to amend it that way.
I think the answer to your question was, it is a possibility to do that. I think the Board of Selectment has said they've chosen not to do that. Now, it's your choice as to what you do. Vote it up, vote it down, amend it, whatever you wish.
It seems to me that if the concern is that the Minuteman tech assessment is going to come in and take this seventy thousand, then it would be wrong to have pulled down the town budget further. On the other hand, I think that there must be a way to make it contingent upon what happens, and therefore, keep the permanent tax base at a lower level. I think that it's nice to say, oh, well, we're going to take away this spike in the bonding package, but the bonding package is exactly what the town meeting last year, at least, seemed to want to say, that that was, this is going to go away from our permanent tax base after a fixed period of time. We're going to have decided, yes, this is what we want to spend the money on. So I think that I would like to propose some sort of amendment that would either consider this after we consider the override package, or somehow combine it into that.
Are you asking a question?
No, no, I'd like to propose that we, an amendment that would say...
Well, I'll tell you what, you'll have to come up and construct an amendment that will do what you want to do, and then we'll discuss it and vote on it.
Okay.
But the problem that you're going to have is, in about two seconds, we're going to vote on this article. So we either need an amendment now, or we won't have one, and we'll vote on the article, and it will either pass or fail.
Can I propose that we delay voting on this article till after the override?
You can propose that we delay the article. I'll tell you what the motion is exactly. You have really two choices, maybe have more than two, but two that come to mind is you can vote to lay this article on the table. That takes a two-thirds vote. That takes a two-thirds vote. It's non-debatable, and it can be done fairly quickly. You can move to postpone it indefinitely. We haven't used that motion very much. The problem with an indefinite postponement is it's so indefinite, and it may never come up for, you know, back for discussion in this meeting. You could propose to lay it on the table, and then take it off the table at some future time, if you so choose.
But that would give me time to try to draft a...
It would give you time if it passes.
Okay. Well, I'll try.
You're going to give it a whirl?
Yeah, give it a whirl, why not?
All right. Well, there's a certain amount of formality that I do demand. Would you say I...
I'd propose that we tabled this article.
Close enough. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
All right, this is, I want to make sure I'm right. This is not a debatable motion. It's not debatable, it's not amendable. Takes two-thirds to pass. All in favor of laying this article on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion is lost. Mr. Gronnik.
Mr. Moderator, there's a fundamental problem, really fundamental, with trying to tie this article to any form of an override. If it takes almost a year to get final numbers, and we were to pass an override that was contingent upon those final numbers, that override amount would be up in the air for that entire length of time. You could, in effect, screw up the entire override process by doing such a thing. It seems prudent to me to do exactly what the Selectmen are suggesting and the Finance Committee is recommending we do, which is to take, in a sense, seventy-seven thousand dollars in cash that we happen to have, that was allocated for use that was not used, put it into a fund that can't get expended without this group or some subsequent group coming back in the next year's town meeting and deciding how to spend it. It's not like this money's going to disappear, all right? If we were to, in fact, vote this down, and to try and apply it to an override, and make the override continued upon that seventy grand being there, we may not know for a year. So I recommend that we support this article as it's proposed.
I recommend recognizing lady at the back.
Hi, my name is Deborah Poibert, Carlton Drive. And one of the questions I have is, on Articles ten through twelve, there were some monies appropriated under Ed Reform, well, there were monies that were questioned to be raised and appropriated for the different schools. Were those included in any of the monies in the budget at all, and those that were, where no action was taken, are those monies accounted for in any place?
Mr. Hunter.
The ten through twelve, only one of which we appropriate any money, were for this fiscal year. Ed Reform came into being in June, and they applied the formula to fiscal ninety-four. They were designed to get us into compliance this year. Everything else we're talking about is for next year, for fiscal ninety-five, and what we're talking about here around this differential for Minuteman is Minuteman's ninety-five numbers. Ron Fitzgerald's come back, and we've recomputed the number here on a three-point-oh-four percent basis, and I don't think we're going to need this particular money, but for all the good work that Ron Fitzgerald and Bob Wilsey are putting in, we're not confident that the state are going to accept their numbers finally, so we're hedging our bets to some degree.
Okay, but the monies that were in, that were originally put aside for ten through twelve, are they included in any numbers at all, such that any of the numbers that were no action taken on these articles could be put to offset some of the expenses?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I guess I have a question. Once again, we find out, looking ahead a little bit, that the seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar amount listed for Minuteman vocational isn't. Are we going to have, perhaps from the Finance Committee, some kind of overall presentation that points out some of these things, so that as we go through these articles one by one, we can look ahead to see where we end up when we're all done, and if so, when?
The Minuteman number has bounced from seven forty-one to four hundred and, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. No one seems to know exactly what it is going to be. The budget was based on what the town administration and the school thinks it will be. So the prudent thing is to put in what you think it's going to be. This was the number that I heard Friday, that was the seven, seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar number. It's changed now from Friday to today by the seventy thousand dollars. I'm not sure more I can tell you about that. That's not the town's doing, it's not the school's doing, it's not Minuteman's doing, it's the data coming from the state.
Mr. Moderator, I am somewhat familiar with the position of Mr. Almstead's in, having been in it, where numbers change for the Finance Committee as you walk into town meeting, but my question was not specifically on the seven forty-one. I think we have now gotten the answer on that, but I'm just asking whether the Finance Committee plans to take us through the whole set of numbers with perhaps some of these last-minute pieces of information that come in tonight and tomorrow night, brought to our attention as we go through these numbers. That's all I'm asking. Do you have a plan to do that?
The data that we've handed out, that is what we're prepared to discuss now, if there's more required, I'm afraid we can't do it at this time, but we'll do it at some later time, but for this town meeting, what we have is, what you see is what you get.
Thank you.
Gentlemen at the back.
My name's Peter Berry from Faulkner Hill Road. Do you have an estimate on next year's, how much of this money you'd be planning on using for next year's debt service? Says in fiscal ninety-six, you wouldn't anticipate, you need more money to pay the new debt service in fiscal ninety-six.
The first bond payment is not due until fiscal ninety-six, so we wouldn't plan to use any of this in fiscal ninety-five. We'd be putting it aside, leaving it in the fund through ninety-five. If by chance, Minuteman required more money, we'd have to call a special town meeting and two-thirds vote would then appropriate out of this fund to Minuteman.
My question was, if Minuteman doesn't need the money, how much of it do you anticipate using next year? Is it the total seventy thousand dollars you need for debt service next year?
Do you mean next year as in ninety-six or ninety-five?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, we would use all of it. That would go toward that one blip, that one year, that we don't have quite enough capacity to cover the first bond payment, and thereafter, we do.
Okay, I have another question also, and I may have missed this, but is this seventy-seven thousand included in the eleven, one fifty-seven that we already voted?
No, it's in the, well, seven thousand of it is. It would have been eleven million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, the total town appropriation, but it was one fifty instead. So seven thousand is part of the municipal appropriation. The other is the Minuteman appropriation, which, if you see on the Finance Committee's chart, is seven hundred and forty-one thousand. We will be appropriating six hundred and seventy thousand for Minuteman, so the balance of that is seventy thousand.
Okay, I guess, so what happens to the seven thousand if we don't put it in the stabilization fund? Does it go into free cash?
It's just not raised, is that it? It would go to free cash at the end of the year?
Okay, no one else is standing, we'll vote on this article. We'll vote on this motion as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Article seventeen, Fire Department Ladder Truck Replacement. Mr. Lake moves that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager to purchase and equip an aerial ladder truck for the fire department. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven-nine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Let me give you a little background on this article as well. The town has a ladder truck that was purchased in nineteen sixty-five, I believe, at least it's a nineteen sixty-five model. It failed last October at a fire, I believe, in Maynard. I think it was the Maynard High School fire where the ladder failed. We've attempted to get the ladder repaired, which is the logical thing to do. We've had any number of bids, all of which say, yes, we can fix it. In order to do what you want, will cost you in the order of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and we will not guarantee it. What we end up with after we pay three hundred thousand dollars or so is a thirty-year-old ladder truck that nobody will guarantee it won't break again next week, and it has been out of service more and more. It was finally put out of service last October, when the chief came to the town with the impact of the Ed Reform law. We told him, park it and take the key out of it, and we'll see you later. That's when it looked like we were going to have to pull a million dollars out of this year's budget for the schools. We did put on a hiring freeze, we put on an overtime freeze. We managed to save someplace in the order of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this year's budget. We did this by not manning fire stations, by not bringing in people to cover short shifts, by not covering shifts with the police department. So as the picture got better as the year went along, we were still without a ladder truck. What does the town need a ladder truck for? Every town has a ladder truck. What do they use it for? Chimney fires, any time you're dealing with a fire at any kind of elevation, including chimney fires, you have to have some way to get on the roof and put it out. This time that the old timers stand up and say, well, we used to take manual ladders and throw them up and run up. We've looked at the cost of enough firefighters to throw up hundred-foot ladders. It's not like it used to be. It's cheaper to buy a truck, and that's the way to gain the altitude. Why don't we call on our neighbors? We could call on Maynard, and by the time they found a way around the South Acton Bridge that their ladder truck could reach, the fire would probably be out. We are still asking Maynard to cover the areas south of the South Acton Bridge till the state gets around to doing something about it so that we can repair it. It's all right to borrow from your neighbors. After you go on borrowing for months, they begin to ask, hey, how come we're buying a ladder truck, and we're paying for it, and you guys are using it? A reasonable question. We're going to...